Didn't be gun. Bob?
Bob, you're on mute. Everyone was placed on mute when we start the new meeting. So if you want to speak, you have to unmute.
I've got it. The announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting was given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed by the following WebEx link, PTH dot WebEx dot com slash PTH slash onstage slash G dot P H P question mark M T I D equals equals. And if you can't, if you don't remember what I said, I believe it's on the website. So you can, you can get it from there. Nora, call the roll.
Apologize. Berkowitz?
Jaskowitz?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Parek?
Yeah.
Prasad? Ready's having trouble logging in. Snyder? Willins?
Here.
Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have with us the board attorney, Mr. King, the board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, who just said present. Oh, Chad.
Mr. Berkowitz says.
Berkowitz here.
He's Berkowitz is in. Okay.
Okay, we'll dispense with the pledge of allegiance. We will return to the pledge of allegiance next month.
And I don't mean to interrupt. Let me read that announcement for all the attendees.
Supers so.
I know. This announcement is for members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting, rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session.
Thank you, Nora. At this point in the meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Nora, any hands?
No hands.
Okay, I want to go back to your emails. Bear with me one second. And so we have the first four can be grouped together, the next two can be grouped together, and 240 Littleton Road is not on the agenda resolutions was marked draft, and we have to know if Peter can approve it. Can we do Littleton Road, Peter? I don't hear you.
I would carry it so the, I believe the attorney can review it.
Okay, fine. So the first four, can you tell us who can vote?
First three, really?
The first four, everyone except Ready.
Mr. Just, would you want to move those four?
Yes, I moved the adoption of application 21:04, 21:05, 21:08, and 20:23.
Is there a second? Second Casey. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, was Littleton Road the 711?
That's correct.
That you, we, I apologize. You can vote on that. I'm not waiting for that attorney's review.
Is that here?
All right, let's do 2022 and 2060. Who can we, who can do those?
I'll do it again. I moved for the adoption of resolutions for application 20:22 and 20:60.
Second, Willins.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
And Willins?
Yes.
I'm not on those?
No, you're not.
Okay. All right, that takes care of resolution. Now, we're going to do the Littleton Road. Now, the Littleton Road, is it, is a motion to withdraw? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct. And it's, we're, we're, they have requested it be withdrawn. So we are withdrawing and denying any, any of their relief without prejudice.
And do you have to get, have the resolution number on that one? I don't see it on the.
Seventeen seventy-four.
Oh, my God. Okay, someone want to move that resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution seventeen seventy-four B, adjourned as indicated.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Ready? Oh, he's having trouble getting in. Willins?
Yes.
Did you forget me?
Sure. You weren't there.
I wasn't there for that one?
No.
All right. Oh, that was, I was sick. Okay, thank you. All right, so we can go into, we don't have any correspondence, so we can go right into the agenda.
Correct.
And the first application we have is application twenty-one ten, James Nichols, Nine Ridge Road, block four eighty-eight, lot one, a C variant, so a scolod install a generator and a pad. Is Mr. Nichols on the meeting? Mr. Nichols?
I'm here.
I don't, do I see you? I hear you? I'm sorry.
You can hear me.
Oh, there you are. Okay, Mr. Nichols.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board to choose help you got?
I do.
And for the record, are you the owner of the subject property?
I am.
And do you have video?
One second.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nichols, you'd like to install a generator and a pad in your side yard where six feet, six feet is the required setback, and you're proposing five feet.
That's correct.
So you're in an R three zone, which is a fifteen thousand square foot minimum. And of course, I have no idea how many square feet you have here.
The block.
And
Says it on the survey.
It does say on the survey.
He could. Sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. So you have a conforming lot. It looks like your house is set to the, I'm looking at the drawing, set to the right of the drawing. And is there an easement or something on the other side? What's that, what's that line that goes around there like that? Is that a?
Step back line.
That's a setback line.
Yeah, it's two front yards.
Okay, so you're putting, you're putting it in the logical place. Have you, have you discussed this with your next door neighbor? Do you have any problems with this?
Not that I'm aware of. I've notified all the neighbors. The only response I've gotten was asking who I was using to install the generator.
I'm sorry, is, is what?
They were just asking who I was using to install the generator.
Okay, all right. Are, are they aware that, that it has like a fifteen minute exercise every week, and you're going to do that during the day, right? Like around in time on a Friday or something when it won't disturb anybody?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an automated process. So we would, you know, when, when.
Yeah, I have, I have two of them. I have one in each house, but they're both set for twelve o'clock on Fridays. So that doesn't wake anybody up. It's not on a weekend when that company, okay? Any other questions by the board?
No.
Are any members in the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? Nora?
No hands raised.
No hands. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? Mr. Nichols?
No.
Okay. Are any members in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this, to this application and support this application? Any hands? No. No. Someone like to make a recommendation? It seems like it's the minimalist request.
Yeah, I will be supporting this and recommending that we approve it clearly as the minimalist. And as the witness has said, Mr. Nichols has explored other opportunities and positions on the property, which were not viable. So therefore, I'll be voting in favor of this application.
A one frame resolution so we can move on?
Sure. Application twenty-one colon ten, James Nichols, Nine Ridge Road, block forty-eight, lot one, zone R three. Recommend granting a C variance to install a generator and pad contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column eight.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Um, let's see, not on, Willins?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result is the variance is granted. We will memorialize this at our next meeting, and you'll be free to proceed. Enjoy. It's a great, it's a great insurance policy, boy. But I like to go out, and you're the only one in the neighborhood that has lights on. It's everybody else becomes very jealous. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next case. Arlen Bell, five eighty-seven Bell Road, C variance to construct a new driveway in the same location as previous driveway. Mr. Bell, are you here? Mr. Bell? No, Mr. Bell? Going once? Anybody representing Mr. Bell?
It's a, it's a minimalist case. I think you wonder why it's here.
So five, some five feet from the property line.
Well, it's been there since nineteen eighty-five.
We still need testimony, so we, we're got to either carry it, Mr. Chairman.
Carry, let's carry the case without notice, and we'll get an extension from him if necessary, Nora. You got a date to carry. Doesn't, we, I think it's a five minute case unless there's objection. So if you maybe squeeze him in the next one or the one after that.
We are very full.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can we possibly schedule a seven o'clock meeting to do residentials, you know, like knock out four, or five, or six of them in the, you know, we can do residentials in five minutes, right, Mr. King?
Yes. We just have to notice, you know, the next in-person meetings.
You want to think about that, Nora?
Absolutely. My only question would be, for those who already noticed, is it enough that, you know, the town puts something on the website?
That, I would say no. I would say for the future ones, we can carry them. Or if we had to carry, like, like this one, we could carry to the next meeting at seven o'clock. We can give that announcement.
You're, you have a lot of residential applications, correct?
Yes, yes.
You're not, you're not, you don't have a lot of big commercial applications, do you?
No.
So if we were to say do a seven o'clock in July, that would give you the opportunity to get the people on. And we could, they'd have enough time to notice and everything.
Would. Um, however, Pete broke up, so I couldn't hear what he said regarding.
The, the ones that are, have currently noticed, I would say it's too late. I would start putting on the ones that haven't noticed for seven o'clock.
Right, as a special meeting.
That's, that's correct. Now, like this, this current one, although it noticed, the people would be here for today. So at today's meeting, we can advise it. It's been carried to, you know, whatever meeting at seven o'clock.
Can you do, can we do a seven in July and a seven in August and maybe bang out some of these?
Yeah. I was going to suggest, even with the concerns that Mr. King is posing, even for the seven thirty meetings, can we just schedule a seven meeting and then pack some, pack some residentials before those who are already committed to the seven thirty timeframe and, and take care of a few?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant to say if it didn't come, you know, clear, you know, current meetings that we have, as long as they can notice in time.
Yeah, right. So June, June ninth might be tough for that to happen, but the following meeting.
That's fine. That's fine. The second one in June and the, maybe the second one in July. And then when, when June comes around, we'll see where we're at. And, you know, an extra half hour, you know, we, we can get a lot done, especially if they're, you know, one foot generators.
Right. And, and that, and this will be whether it's in person or virtual, because we're having the larger ones virtual. You don't care.
Whatever, whatever you like.
Okay.
Can't have a combo. Seven o'clock on a specific day?
Yes, we can do that if you want.
All right. What date do we?
Laura, can we have a combo, virtual and, and in person, or is that not possible?
No, that, that's way too difficult. We're not prepared for something like that, so.
Well, come on, it's two thousand twenty-one. This is a so, okay, somebody's ringing. Is that me?
So, Belle, listen, let's, um.
That is me.
Can we announce maybe at the next meeting, what date we'll carry Belle to? It might be a good idea to check with the guy.
Well.
That we carry the next meeting to announce the date.
All right, so we'll carry it to the next meeting. Next meeting, we'll, we'll announce what we carry it to.
That's perfect.
Okay.
I like that. So motion to carry case.
Twenty-one twelve.
Twenty-one twelve.
Twenty-one twelve.
Twenty-one twelve to our next meeting, which is
June ninth.
June ninth without notice, and you'll get an extension if necessary, right, Nora?
Yes, correct.
All right. And motion to that effect?
Come on, Berkowitz.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so Belle is carried. Now we go to, this is a carried case, right? This is Boran, Boraniana, Boran Nia. Uh, this is the driveway on Noel Road. I've passed that place house a thousand times. I saw the pictures. Everybody seen the pictures of that?
Yes.
Okay, so where are we at with this case? Where are we at with regard to testimony?
I don't, do we ever have any?
At the, yes, we did. At the last meeting, I think members asked that the pictures be provided, and that additional testimony be given. There was concerns, I believe, with drainage from the engineer, Chaz, that on the left side of the property, I guess the way it slopes. And I think some of the members just didn't have a picture of what the site looked like. Is that correct, Chaz?
Yes, they have to address the drains a little bit more specifically.
So do we have testimony from the applicants as to what they're going to do?
Not yet. I believe they were to come back and talk about that.
They're here right now.
Yes, I believe, gentlemen, both, both of you were sworn at last meeting, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and you're still.
Can I just interrupt for one quick second? Mr. Ready emailed us. He's actually listed with the attendees, and he's trying to get switched over to us.
Okay.
Can we handle that, Laura?
We're looking for him.
Uh. Does anybody know when the pictures came in the email?
Correct. Pictures and E O and also Justin's report came in.
I think that's an internal question, sir.
Anybody know when we, when Nora distributed the pictures to us? Because I'm looking through my.
I apologize. I cannot, I sent them email. Yes.
Thirteenth, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, what?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. May thirteenth.
Just to let you know that the board members, I am online now.
Okay. Okay, so I'm looking at the pictures that the applicant sent. And maybe the applicant can tell us from the pictures how he plans on mitigating the drainage.
Okay, I can, I can explain. Um, there is no need for any mitigation for drainage. Uh, and it's confirmed by town engineer's report, I believe. There are, there is no additional water going into any of the neighboring properties. So I don't know why mitigation is needed. I'm willing to listen to the board members and you, Chairman, if there is any need, but I don't see any need for mitigation.
You talked to township engineer?
Yeah, he came, he sent an engineer, and he also submitted a report, I believe. That's what he told me. I spoke to him twice.
Well, excuse me, but the March nineteen twenty twenty-one report says at the time of the visit, there was no runoff observed, but the visit was not during a time of significant rain events, which may present a storm order issue. And that's from the town engineer. So that's a total different story. Do you, do you have an expert who's an engineer?
Do you want me to do that? Are you asking me, Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay. Um, there, there has been, since last meeting, there has been at least ten days of heavy rain. I believe none of our neighbor have ever complained about any drainage issue. Now, if the engineer came on a non rainy day, you know, how can, how can we confirm that? You can confirm it by, you know, not having any complaints from anybody. I mean, if he was, he's not going to come to inspect the house anyways.
Well, here's the thing, like, this was not a resounding endorsement from Mr. Liza. I, I see where you're saying. He said there's no impact right now, but he definitely put a big qualifier in that letter.
Well, listen, it is really, very, you see, I'm an engineer myself. I don't see there is any issue. I, I suggest if, if really you wanna, wanna see, look at the, look at the video. It will also tell you there is no issue. What, everything slopes down to the road. Nothing slopes to the neighbors. Please look at it.
What kind of engineer are you?
This is a safety issue, and we are talking about drainage. I really don't believe.
What kind of engineer are you?
I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer, state of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and Delaware.
All right, thanks.
So are there any neighbors here today to make any statements about this application?
You know, if you, if you look at the pictures, the driveway is sloped significantly from the house to the road.
Then please look at the video, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'm having trouble looking at the video. That's the problem. It's not, it's asking me to do crazy stuff. So unfortunately, I'm working on a laptop and doesn't have all the software downloaded. Yeah, I, I can't look at, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures. I, I know the house. I, I live practically around a corner from there. Uh. Chaz, with all due respect, do you see any?
No, I don't have elevations, but if everything drains toward the road, and none of the neighbors are complaining, it's roof leaders and gutters and the pavers drain, everything paved drains to the road, then I would think that it would be acceptable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have an issue here. I really don't.
And in addition to that, this is already existing, and he's replacing the current driveway, right? So then no neighbors are complaint.
Yeah, I, I just, I just don't, I don't, and it, you know what? It's in an area where you cannot ask people to park on the street. This is a treacherous corner on that, around Noel Road. So the fact that they have off-street parking is, is to the benefit of everyone. Because somebody coming around that corner, half in the bag, we don't want to see them plowing into parked cars. So I think there's a, there's a additional thing to consider. These people have ample split, and they can, they can turn the car around. They don't have to back out onto Noel Road. There's a lot of positives here. Uh, and it's, like I said, if you're looking at the pictures, I am not an engineer. I'm a CPA, but I can see which way water is going to run. It's going to run downhill. So any other question?
And also, and also, Mr. Chairman, this is for the safety and, you know, the road is such a way, it is a safety wise, also, it is good.
That's, yeah, yes, that's, that's perfectly true. Perfectly true. Any other questions by any members of the board?
Yeah, just, just one quick question. Which is the recent photo? Because there's one with the grass island, and then there's one with the paver island.
And the block island is the recent one, sir.
Okay.
Are any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? No hands? Nora, I lost it. No hands?
I see one hand raised. I don't know if it's in regard to this application. Is there a Les Streich? Can you hear me, Les?
Yes, ma'am. It was in regards to something later on the docket. I'm, I'm.
All right, please put your hand down then.
I'm a participant, and I'm just trying to get over. Sorry about that.
Right. You are a participant in another application?
Yes, ma'am.
Not an attendee?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, Laura. There's nothing else that the applicant would like to add, right? Is that correct?
No, that's good, actually.
You're, you're good? Okay. Any members in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? Okay. Um, can someone make a comment here, right? You know, with regard to the safety and, and everything? Can someone make?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the very important point to bring it here, both safety and the benefit of, for the residents. And it is a, you know, I, I'm in favor of this one.
Someone frame a resolution?
Application twenty calling thirty-four, Bar Kavmar and Pragnavan Bhurani, six twenty-seven Noel Road, blocks five sixty-eight, lot two ten, zone R four. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize an existing driveway patio and four retaining walls contradict, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns eight thirteen, section four thirty dash two seventy-five H.
Second, Randy.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Kaplan.
No.
Parek.
Yes.
Are you sitting in a corner?
Snyder. No. Willands.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. In, in the future, if you're not gonna vote yes for an application, please make a comment about why you're not voting before you vote no. Thank you.
I, I actually hinted to it, sir, but nobody picked up on it. Thank you.
Hello, this is Garland Bell. Can anyone hear me?
Mr. Bell, yes, you can.
I'm sorry, I've been working for over a half hour trying to get something to connect it and this doesn't support my iPad. I have a computer. It doesn't have a microphone. So, you know, I, I apologize for not being here when you, you called upon me.
Okay, you're ready to go now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Uh, King, you want to, Chairman?
Sir, could you raise your right hand?
Okay.
Do you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you are the owner of the subject property?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is sworn and somehow I'm appearing on his screen.
But before we go on, we can let the previous case know they've been approved, correct?
Correct.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, you're approved. Thank you, Mr. Jaskowitz.
No problem, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bell, you have a driveway. You have an existing two-foot setback. You're allowed five. I understand the driveway has been there for many years. Can you tell us how many years it's been there?
The house was built in nineteen eighty.
And were you the owner of the property when it was built?
Yeah, uh, yes, I, I bought it from the builder.
And as far as you know, when the house was built, you got all the necessary approvals, certificate of occupancy, the driveway was in there, right?
That's correct.
Do we need any more testimony on this, uh, from, from the applicant? Is there any other? I, I clearly, if this was there when the house was built, it was, it was the obligation of the town to tell him at that point that his driveway was wrong. Am I wrong? Mr. Berkowitz, am I wrong?
I would think. But you got a building permit and you got a CO.
I, I, yeah, I, I think he's, he's here because, uh, he's repaving or making improvements to the driveway. So that's probably why they brought him back.
Uh, this is the driveway that's been torn up, right? You know, this driveway torn up for like six months?
That's correct.
I just passed it the other day and I said to my wife, I said, boy, there must be a problem there because that driveway's been torn up forever. Oh, my gosh. All right, Mr. Holloway, did you have something to say? I'm sorry. No, okay. Any other members of the board have any comments?
No.
So the reason it's been tore up for six months, he tore it up, was gonna put pavers in, went to get a permit and then found out he had to come to us, right?
I believe that's correct, right, Mr. Bell?
That's correct.
Okay.
The other thing, the standard didn't exist in nineteen eighty.
This, thank you, Mr. Chadwick. That's interesting.
Yeah.
So he predates the standard.
Yep, standard was eight eighties, I think.
So why wasn't he grandfathered?
Yeah, why isn't this a non-conforming?
This is ridiculous.
He's here. He's here.
Well, let's, let's vote and move along.
All right, let's move along. Um, any members of the public have any questions of this witness? Mr. Bell, is nothing else you'd like to say, right? Or any members? Who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none, right, right, Nora? Is that correct? Uh, obviously why we should approve this. Somebody frame a resolution, please, and we can move on.
I'll take care of it. Um, application number twenty-one twelve, Arlen Bell, five eight, five eighty-seven, Bell Road, block, block seven twelve, lot nineteen fourteen in the R three zone. I recommend that we grant the C variance to construct a new driveway in the same location as the previous driveway, contrary to section four thirty dash two seven five X.
Second, Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora Colerall?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willands.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result is the variance is granted. Enjoy your, enjoy a new driveway.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, we're gonna call case, um, nineteen fifty-six, I guess that is, UTP acquisitions. Um, this is an application for, uh, multiple uses of a property. Uh, Nora, how many people, members of the public did you have on that call right now? Approximately?
Eighty-eight.
Okay. I am speaking to the eighty-eight people that are on this call. First thing I'd like to say is that except for the professionals, Mr. Holloway, Mr. Chadwick and Mr. King, the rest of us are volunteers and we do this generally twice a month. I personally have been doing it for thirty-one years. I expect all the members of the public to act in a calm and, 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 um, I don't, I don't want any eruptions.
Professional.
Professional. I don't want any, any accusations. I don't want any comments made about the applicant's personal situations. None of that pertains here. Now, I'm gonna go through the, the drill. The applicant will present a witness, a sworn witness, that sworn testimony. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. It's like a court, something like a court. We hear, we hear sworn testimony. Once that, that applicant, applicant's, um, um, witness has testified, generally, members of the board will ask questions. Once the board is through asking questions, or maybe Mr. Chadwick and Mr. Holloway might have questions, then I would open it up to members of the public. Now, I'm gonna be very, um, careful now to explain that when a witness has testified, you may ask the witness a question that pertains to the testimony. Like he might say, there's a hundred and fifty foot setback and you might ask him to explain that or is that tree or is it, uh, is there gonna be a buffer or is there gonna be burns or things like? Those are the kind of questions you can ask. Once the applicant has presented all of his witnesses, I will give members of the public an opportunity to testify. And just like the applicant's witnesses, you will be sworn in and your testimony will be taken, taken down. Now, I'm gonna caution you, caution, caution you on one other thing. If you ask the man, the, the witness, is that wall green? And he says, no, it's blue. Don't ask him again if it's green because he's gonna tell you it's blue. These are, these are very professional witnesses that are not gonna be easily intimidated if you keep asking the same questions. They're gonna give you the same answers, all right? Which also means that if you're the next person to ask a question, please don't ask the same question that the previous person asked because the answer is not gonna change. Now, we're gonna try and move this along as expeditiously as possible. I anticipate it's gonna take many nights and I, again, I hope that everyone's gonna act, act in a professional manner. Now, members of the board, is there any other comments you'd like to make about our proceedings? Or have, have I said everything that's necessary?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. If there's an attorney representing people here, how does that work?
Okay, if an attorney represents a group of people or one person, he questions the witnesses, not the, not the people that hired him. So John Smith represents Joe Jones and Mary White and everybody. They have a mouthpiece for the questions. Now, when it comes time to testifying, they all have a right to testify. But if you've hired an attorney, the attorney will represent you in the question period. Mr. King, am I right?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Any other?
Well, he only, he only represents those he represents. Others could ask questions within the same realm of questioning.
That's correct. That's, that's correct.
That's perfectly correct. Okay, so I just wanna make mention to the public, we've had many cases like this in the past and we're gonna do our best to treat everyone fairly. The applicant has the right to make this presentation. He's got the legal right to make the presentation. And that's what I want everybody to understand. Okay? All right, so, uh, the applicant has an attorney present? Is there an attorney present for the applicant?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you may proceed, okay?
Yep, all right. With your, with your permission, I'll, I'll make a brief introductory statement before I call my first witness. I think it behooves us to, um, recollect the nature of this application. It's been a long period of time because of the COVID pandemic since we first appeared. And, uh, I'd just like to reorient everyone. I did provide, in addition to the application, a memorandum of January fifteenth, uh, two thousand and nineteen. And, uh, that is, uh, something I would ask the board to read. It is part of the record. I provided a copy to whoever asked for it and it is certainly available. This property is block one sixty-six, lot ninety-six. It's on Front Town Littleton Road and it lies between Dolly and Rita Drives. It's in, uh, the R one and R three zone. It's about twenty-two point one acres. And basically, it is the property that's behind St. Christopher's Church and adjacent to the high school and the high school ball fields. Uh, the proposal here is to use this, what is now vacant parcel behind the church to construct a hundred and fifty-six units, uh, for elderly people, um, in a, uh, uh, a configuration that has fifty apartments for assisted living and independent living and fifty cottages for assisted living and independent living and fifty-six memory care. The assisted living and memory care are, are licensed by the state of New Jersey. And the proposal is really consistent with, um, the residential aspect of the zoning. These are residences. They are residences for elderly people who are in need of assistance or who are no longer either able or desirous of, uh, maintaining their single-family home. And it is a demographic that is, uh, being served throughout the country and indeed throughout New Jersey in a manner which is suggested here. Uh, there's an array of amenities, uh, that are provided in addition to the available healthcare. And, and they include congregate dining. They include the, uh, places to, uh, sustain their, uh, physical ability. Uh, and they have the ability also to meet with, uh, the family who will come on to this, on to the property. This kind of use has been determined by the courts to be an inherently beneficial use. And that's an important factor in this application. Inherently beneficial uses have been found by the state in its statute and in courts, uh, to provide uses which are particularly beneficial, as it states, uh, to the community and therefore do not have to prove, uh, the positive criteria under the municipal land use law. The issue is whether or not, uh, this particularly, uh, inherently beneficial use imposes any negative criteria. And in that regard, I have provided to you what is called the SECA test. And that is the four-pronged, and it has, uh, those four elements are to evaluate the public interest served by the inherently beneficial use. And I will come to that and I will give you some brief explanation. And then is to identify any adverse consequences, uh, i- if there's a granting of the variance. And the third is to consider the conditions, uh, which may be impacted, uh, by any consequence of the granting of the variance. And the fourth is to balance the same. And the board's obligation is to mitigate any impacts that are imposed by the inherently beneficial use and use, and the court has said, use every reasonable effort, uh, to, uh, to establish that the inherently beneficial use may be placed upon the property. Um, in this case, we have a, a, a parcel which is uniquely situated. There is no requirement under the law that it be specifically situated, but here it is. It's behind the church and it's adjacent to the high school. Our courts have said, and it, it very directly, uh, that with respect to special housing needs of, of the elderly, it said, as a consequence of this, the, uh, declining birth rates and longer life expectancies, the elderly are increasingly both in absolute numbers and relative proportion to the total population. And against this backdrop of sharp demographic changes, public attention has increasingly focused on their problems and the problem is natural. And it says, in lieu of the well chronicled, critical shortage of housing suitable to meet the needs of the elderly, we, that's the court, are satisfied that proposed projects are inherently beneficial. And the court also said the need for specialized housing transcends economic status and results from the particular physical and social problems of the elderly.
Mr. Vogel, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
Sure. Uh, my experiences over the years, this testimony like this is given by witnesses and not by the attorney.
It's not, I'm, I'm saying testimony, I'm citing the law as a preamble to the application.
I, well, my opinion is you're borderlining on testifying, okay? So, um.
Testifying, I'm citing the law. I'm giving you the law by the court. That's not.
Why don't you do, why don't you do for this for us? Why don't you, uh, reduce that to a document and get it to all the members so they can, they can read it? Okay?
Um, well, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna have an argument over it. It, it's not, not worthwhile. I don't wanna start out that way. But I just want, I want to highlight the fact that this is.
Yeah, that's fine. Highlight, highlight it. You don't have to read, you don't have, just, you can state, you can state, there is a law that says this and there's a law that says that. And, and provide the documentation to us and, and we're, we're a reasonably educated group that has many years of experience. So I'm just trying to move this on because, believe me, I'm sure you have a lot of hours of testimony coming. But you, it's, it's your, your effect. Go right ahead and do what you like.
Thank you. So I, I, I'll leave it at that since, uh, that's, that's your preference. And I will call my first witness, Mr. David Weiner. May I have the witness sworn, please?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Weiner, where are you?
I am, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. If you can raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear firm testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And for the record, uh, your, uh, testimony will be, uh, engineering?
No, I am acting as the managing member of the applicant and also as the principal of the contractor who will build the project.
It will be factual. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn to provide factual testimony.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Weiner, would you identify, uh, yourself with respect to, uh, this application?
Yes. I am the managing member of the applicant. I will be acting in a co-developing role with Thrive Senior Living. I am also the principal of Pike Construction, who will be the contractor who will ultimately be building the community if we're permitted to do so.
All right, would you give to the court, uh, or give to the board, you're, the background of your entities with respect to, uh, this proposed property and the project that is proposed on the site?
Sure. Uh, Pike has, uh, been in existence for sixty-three years now. Uh, we are located in Patterson, New Jersey. And, uh, over the course of the history of our company, we've been involved in a multitude of projects ranging. And over the course of the history of our company, we've been involved in a multitude of projects ranging from schools to. Religious institutions to commercial resident retail. But the main thrust of of our business has always been in the housing sector, affordable housing, multifamily housing. And specifically in building and developing senior housing. Over the course of the history of the company, we've built approximately fifteen thousand units of housing in the state of New Jersey. Currently, our most recent project, similar to what we're proposing here, is a project that we completed in two thousand and eighteen. In Hamilton, New Jersey called Homestead at Hamilton. That was a hundred and ninety five units of independent living, assisted living and memory care. That building, that community is in full operation now. It's ninety seven percent occupancy and it's thriving even. Through this covid pandemic. We are also currently developing another community in Montvale, New Jersey. Consists of two hundred and three units of independent assisted living and memory care that we're co-developing with Thrive. We're about seventy percent through construction. Thrive will be managing that project. And we're also involved in several other properties right now where we're looking to. Build more senior communities.
All right, would you describe to the board the process that you go through with respect to. Attempting to find sites for these proposed kinds of units?
Well, obviously, we we look for sites where there's a demand. As most of you know, and probably have read with the baby boomers coming of of ages as seniors. There's a tremendous demand in most municipalities in the state of New Jersey. We found through our research and analysis is that while Parsippany in particular has a tremendous demand. There's very little in the way of. Communities to serve that demand. It's a very underserved market. And we feel that it's an excellent location for this type of community. And that the residents specifically of Parsippany would benefit greatly from a community of this nature.
Describe the the nature of the site and why you particularly chose this site with respect to Saint Christopher's Church?
Sure. Well, first of all, the site due to its. The infrastructure available to it. Easy access from major thoroughfares and state highways makes it easily accessible. The fact that it's behind and will be associated with Saint Christopher's Church is a is a positive. We found that a lot of residents of our senior community. Are find religious interaction very comforting and embrace it. And there'll be an opportunity here for for. Members of the congregation at Saint Christopher's to participate in activities. At the senior community and at the same time allow residents of the senior community to attend church services and. Interact. Also, the fact that it's in close proximity to the high school, we feel is a very positive attribute. There's been studies to show that there's tremendous benefits to both sides to have intergenerational relationships. The seniors in the communities thrive on interacting with younger generation and younger generation get enjoyment out of. Interacting with the seniors and hearing about their past experiences and their perspectives on on life in general. Also, in today's age, as most of you probably know, if you have kids, there's a tremendous amount of community service. That the kids like to embrace and be involved with, and this would give them the opportunity to participate. And provide community service through their interaction with the seniors.
All right, would you? Could you describe to the board in in brief, not not the architectural specifics or the engineering specifics? The general. Aspects of this proposed facility. Just to set the table for the testimony to come later.
Sure. Well, let me first say that. In our in in partnering with Thrive, one of the things that we embrace in that relationship is Thrive is one of the most innovative. Managers and operators of these types of communities. And what you'll see. With this plan is that it's not the traditional. Independent living, assisted living and memory care community that you you'll see. Today in that it's not one large building. This is spread out and we've tried to keep it to a residential feel and a residential scale. You'll see cottages that are semi-attached cottages that simulate single-family residential style living. This will give the opportunity for seniors who are a little bit younger and not necessarily in need of full assisted living. But need some assistance and 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 want that type of living to be able to. Both have their independence and get the services and benefits of the community. The there is a central building that will where all the amenity spaces will be located, the dining, the athletic center. Cafe. And there will be fifty units within that building, apartment-style units for assisted living and independent living residents. And then, and this is really unique in today's. World of senior communities. For the memory care portion of the project, we've created a village-type setting. So that these people aren't necessarily feel like they're locked into a single floor of a building. They'll have their own little community within the community where they'll be safe. They'll be able to interact with each other. It's in a smaller setting so they don't feel overwhelmed. And we feel that this is really at the cutting edge of senior communities today. And we think it's a a great plan for this location because it fits in well with the residential nature surrounding the property as well.
Yeah, would you describe in general terms, based on your experience with other similar facilities? Who the people are who come to reside in a facility such as this?
Obviously, you have a wide variety of seniors ranging. From people who are completely independent to people who need a very high level of care. The beauty of these types of communities, it provides that flexibility so that. A variety of people can take advantage of the services we have to offer. In in our experience, the average age of an independent living resident is somewhere between seventy eight and eighty two years old. And what we're trying to do here with this community and specifically with the cottages that we presented. Is to attract some some younger seniors who. Would be willing to move into a community if they felt that it still had that residential feel. It gave them the opportunity to be independent. It also gave them. The ability to take care of all the socialization that we provide, meals that we provide in terms of dining, athletic athletic center. Programs and entertainment. So. That's part of the philosophy of this plan.
Would you would you describe to to the to the board the the layout of it? And the access that is proposed for the use of the facility?
Sure. So. The access to the site will be off of would be off of Littleton Road. If you recall, we initially presented a plan to the board where we were coming into the site from Rita Drive. After hearing a number of concerns about traffic on Rita Drive and the effects and impact on the high school. We spoke with. The members of of the church, the higher-ups and and they agreed and were willing to allow us to take access. From directly from Littleton Road, utilizing the existing access roads on the church's property to enter the back portion where we'll be. Building this community. So when you first enter onto our portion of the site from the church property. You'll be coming into the residential neighborhood as opposed to looking at a large building, which is more centrally. Or located or even further to the rear of the property, so it's not as imposing and gives that residential feel.
Have have you had the opportunity on on your experience to visualize or experience? Whether or not there's any. Impact from the on surrounding residential properties?
Well, in in our in our experience, there there really isn't. First of all, there's not a lot of traffic. So and 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 visitation usually takes place during. Normal hours or the early evening. Also, because we are providing care to the residents. It has less of an impact also with ambulance traffic, which could be disruptive to a residential neighborhood because. There's people here to care for for the residents. Sometimes if a resident is living alone and they may call for an ambulance out of panic or because. They they don't know what's happening to them or a a child of a of a of a senior. It's concerned that their parent is living alone and doesn't want to take the chance, so they're calling nine one one and calling for an ambulance. Where here, there are caretakers who can assess whether somebody is in need of immediate medical care. Or whether it could be handled on site. The scale of the buildings are built in such a manner where they're not tall imposing buildings. Most of the with with the exception of the. Amenities building in the center of the property, the buildings are single stories or a story and a half. So you they're not towering buildings that will have have a of a unsightly impact on their residential neighbors.
Hey, I have no questions to this witness, Mr. Chairman, and submit him to the board for any questions you may have.
Can you tell us, is there an affiliation? Of this entity that's going to own the property? Is it is it with the Catholic Church or is it with a nonprofit? Or is it a profit-making entity that's going to own the property?
It's a profit-making entity, Mr. Chairman. There's no formal affiliation. We hope to have a relationship with the church and have sharing of programming and services. But there is no affiliation with them.
And is that that profit-making entity associated with the other properties that you mentioned? Or are all these independent ownerships or what?
The property in Hamilton is a different ownership. The property in Montvale is the same is the same ownership. Or would be a similar ownership to what we are proposing here. We've. The relationship that we've developed with Thrive took place after we developed the property in Hamilton. But we're looking at along with Parsippany, we're looking at several other. Opportunities to develop these types of communities together in various parts of the metropolitan area.
But that company that you mentioned is that would be the management entity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions?
I do. You said that you you're not affiliated with the Catholic Church, but you hope to have a relationship with the Catholic Church. Can you elaborate on that?
To the best that that I can right now, there's been no formal discussion with the church about any type of relationship other than possibly having. Father come over and 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 maybe do services. Every once in a while, maybe do some lectures, have the ability for our residents. Which are majority of the residents we find in these communities will come from from the municipality municipality within. Will it pull from some of the surrounding municipalities? Yes, but in our experience, majority of the residents, seniors who wind up moving into this building are are. Existing residents within the municipality and within Parsippany. So it's no for there's no there've been no discussions about a formal relationship. But it's our hope that we will have an an interaction with with the church because I think both the church and our community would would benefit from it.
Right, but you're going to have residents of a multi-denominational background, so I'm trying to figure out. Your references to we hope to have a relationship with the church. I was trying to explore. Some type of clarification around that.
We're 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 definitely this. This will be a nonsecular community. We're not tied or affiliated with any particular religious entity. We will promote. Unity and we will promote activities and interfaith activities and and activities for all all denominations in faith.
You also referenced the relationship with the with the school. And the benefits of having young people interact with elderly people. Have you pursued that formally with the school district or are you just proposing that as another potential idea that could happen?
Again, we're just proposing it as another potential idea.
So to Mr. Catholic.
Sorry, Nancy, do you have that relationship in in other properties you manage or own?
The other properties that we're involved with aren't necessarily there. You know, in this close proximity with the high school, but we do have other communities where younger generation people are coming in. And interacting with the seniors and doing various activities with them.
Is this something that's commonly referred to like a step-up facility where somebody could go in? Who's more capable and then as they unfortunately their health deteriorates, they go into a. Part of the facility that has a higher level of care?
Well, I I'm not familiar with the term step-up, but I'm more familiar with what we would call a continuum of care. So absolutely, someone may move into this community in the independent living and and and. Live here as an independent living resident and they or their spouse may over time. Have a need for a higher level of care and so they may move into an assisted living unit or. Potentially into the memory care portion of it. We're also proposing here that we would provide home care services to the people in the cottages. So they have the flexibility. They don't necessarily have to move out of their cottage and into the assisted living unit within the building. They would be able to get care if they wanted to stay in their cottage.
So this might be premature, but are you going to be the person to talk to us about? Patients that are in the memory care program? That might wander off or, you know, get off property and and concerns like that?
Yeah, I I would I would rather let let's stretch from Thrive. Answer the questions regarding operations and how the property.
Intended to be our next witness.
Okay. The comments you made on site selection, sir, was the fact that you seek underserved target communities. And that our precipity community is extremely underserved in this category. Could you give us some demographic numbers on that 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 you looked at that come to that conclusion?
I don't have the demographic information at hand, but I believe I'm I'm going off of memory. Les may have the information more at hand, but there's. There in terms of age and income qualified seniors. And by agent income qualified, I would categorize it as seniors who are seventy five years or older in age. And household incomes of approximately fifty thousand dollars and higher. There's literally. Thousands of residents within the borders of Parsippany who fit into that category.
That's fine, but how many current units could we go to within the township? You say we're underserved. I understand we got a lot of people in that category, but. We don't have any place for them to go.
Well, to the best of my knowledge, and again, I'll I'll let Les expand on it. There's care the care one facility nearby. I don't know that it's actually in Parsippany. I think it's in Whippenny. There's some some senior communities in Mars Plains in Denville. But to the best of my knowledge, there are no communities of this nature. In Parsippany, so. David, I can speak to that one.
Thank you.
This is Casey. I have a question. When it came to impact to the neighbors. You said the dates and visitations will be during the evening. For this kind of facility, visitors will be there in the evening. And the other thing you. Into his ambulances and maybe there'll be less number of ambulances because the periodical will take care of it. And you so those are only two impact and how how do they affect the neighbors? Can you just elaborate on that?
Well, let me go back. Maybe I I wasn't clear on what the way I said. Visitation will not take place exclusively in the evening. Obviously, people who work during the day, if they want to go and visit their relatives, their mother, their father, or uncle, whomever it may be, may not be able to do it during the day. If someone's not working, they would go. So visitation will happen at various times. Obviously, on the weekends, more so on the weekends when people are not working. They'll take the time to go visit their loved ones. So I hope that clarifies that aspect of it. With regard to ambulances, again, I think that sometimes with a community of this nature, there's a perception that it could have an impact, an adverse impact on the resources of the municipality. And because of the reasons that I stated, I think that's really not the case. Obviously, we're not taxing the school system. We'll be paying, we'll be a taxpayer to the municipality and we'll be drawing very little in the way of services from the municipality.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vogel, there will be a traffic witness, right? So we can kind of hold the traffic questions off to the traffic.
Yeah. Maybe it's appropriate for me to kind of give you what other witnesses we have, so you'll.
That'd be great.
Oh, our next witness will be Mr. Les Stretch from Thrive, who will be the actual operator. Then Mr. Testaurus, who is the engineer, who will describe the site and how it's proposed to be laid out. Then we will have a traffic testimony. And then we will have Mr. John McDonough, our planner, testify. That is our array of witnesses at this moment. Oh, I did forget, we'll have an architectural witness as well.
Any other questions by the board? Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, I have a couple. The process of occupancy, how are you intending to market this?
Again, I would defer to Les on that. Thrive will be doing the sales and marketing as well as operating the community.
Do you know if it's going to be for sale or for rent?
That I could tell you, it'll be for, all for rent. It's not for, no for-sale units.
And you said, you know, I think Mr. Vogel said, "Some form of organization that would manage all the different aspects."
That would be Thrive Senior Living.
How would the board, if they approve this stipulation? It's easy, it's an ownership. We have HOA and all those different vehicles. But on this one, under rental, how would it operate? Or that's not your area?
That's not really my area.
If I.
Do you know how big, how big the cottages are?
I can speak to that, Jerry, if you can. I don't know if I go now or.
We'll wait for the architect or next witness, that's fine.
Mr. Holloway?
No questions at this time.
No questions. I don't see any other questions from the board. At this point, I'm sorry, did somebody? At this point, we're going to open it up to questions from the public. Now you have to raise your hand. I'm sorry, does somebody, I keep hearing voices. At this point, we're going to open up the questions to members of the public. So you're going to raise your hand, whatever method you have to do that on your device. And then Nora will acknowledge it and give you an opportunity to ask the question. And I just want to remind everybody you're asking questions. So Nora, do you see any hands?
I do, I see Nicholas Homiak. Nick, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. The question is, true or false, none of these units count for anything for affordable housing for Parsippany? They're all for-profit senior and young senior housing? So is that correct?
No, that's not correct. Just so you know, under the assisted living licensure regulations, the state of New Jersey requires that 10% of the licensed beds are made eligible to Medicaid-eligible residents. Those residents qualify as, and meet the needs of the affordable housing requirements of the state of New Jersey as well. So there will be some affordable component to the project.
Is that 10% or 20%?
It's typically 10% of the licensed beds.
Let me interrupt on this. I think that's a whole subject that we're going to have to deal with separate, because the township in its settlement requires all future development is set aside 20%, whether it's rental or owner. The fact that New Jersey license requires a 10% set aside, we'll have to discuss whether or not that, the ordinance that was set, that was approved by the courts. When we get to memory care, it becomes a more difficult issue, because those units are not dwelling units unto themselves. They're more as a nursing bed in terms of an actual facility. And I can't speak to that particular issue without reviewing the settlement agreement, discussing same with the township housing consultant. The cottages are clearly dwelling units. We come under the 20%.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Homiak?
The point I'm trying to make is.
Mr. Homiak, don't make any points at this point. You got to ask questions.
All right.
Did it answer your question?
It's a for-profit enterprise, so I can't see how it could fit into criterias like schools, hospitals.
To testify at this point.
All right, I'm sorry.
Question to ask, ask the question.
The main hall, I forgot how Mr. Werner turned it, like a central location, a dining hall. How much garbage will this generate? Will it be a plastic thing? Will you have dishwashers? Will you have real dishes and silverware? Or will it be a waste generating kitchen or eating facility?
The dining facilities are, would utilize silverware, utensils, plates, not necessarily be serving plastic or using paper. So it wouldn't generate an unusual amount of refuse.
And how much water would you anticipate? You said it has no, no impact. Are you aware that Parsippany has a water deficit? So I'm just interested in the amount of water additionally and what source that you're going to get a permit to get the water from, be it a well or Jersey City?
Mr. Weiner, if you, if you are not the right person to answer this question, and your attorney would like to defer that question to another witness. I don't want answering things that you don't have knowledge of, so.
Sure. Say, I'll say this, Mr. Chairman. We are aware of the water issues within the municipality. As far as the usage and capacity, I would defer to the engineer on that.
And my last question would be, what would the difference be in cost per month between a senior and what you refer to as a younger senior? How much rent would they be paying?
Again, I would defer to Thrive on that. They do the operations and they set the rates for rentals and levels of care.
And no rent control?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by rent control?
Well, it's your rent. It either doesn't go up or it goes up a minimum percentage every year.
Again, there would be a resident agreement that each resident would sign and that would spell out what their rent would be, what the levels of care charges would be. And I'd be more comfortable letting Les Stretch respond to the issues that pertain to the operations.
And the final question would be, does the church have any input on any of this cost or conditions in the land that they're going to surrender to your, to your development?
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Nora, anybody else?
Yes, if Mr. Homiak would put his hand down, please. We have DeVal Shaw.
I think you, Nora.
If you could please provide your address.
Sure, it's 86 South Carter Mill Road.
Thank you.
A quick question. I know you mentioned that the land is very close to Earth School and such. Have you investigated land around Halsey Road? Because we also have church pools around their facility and, you know, the traffic is minimal there compared to where it's on Littleton Road, out of Cassidy?
My team in charge of site selection did a thorough search of what they felt was available in Parsippany and what was best suited. And this is what we came up with. I can't speak to his analysis of another site.
Okay. Yeah, just FYI, in Halsey Road, we have many open buildings. And in fact, I think we also have a care center within one of the facilities around there. In terms of closeness to the school, I think you mentioned that, hey, it's right next to the Parsippany High School. But you have no data that you can provide that the closeness of the school, you know, affects the health. It's just like students are coming in voluntarily, is that correct?
I don't have any specific data. Les may have some, because their experience as operators. I'm just going by my own personal experiences, involvement in these types of communities.
Okay, so it's just an opinion. The main reason I state that is within five minutes' drive of the high school, be it on Monster Brook Road, be it on Mars Plains, we do have closeness of senior care.
Just for questions, not statements. You'll have an opportunity at the end to provide any type of testimony, but just please ask questions.
Okay, thank you. And I think I'm done with the questions. Thank you.
So could I ask a question? I thought his first question was interesting. Why not look at the many empty buildings that are in town in less-trafficked areas and convert one of those buildings into a facility like this? Not essentially, not pods, not their own homes, but their own units?
Well, as I'm sure you're aware, we've been involved with this site for several years now. This was the site that we, at the time, felt was best suited for what we deem as to be a, as Jerry said, inherently beneficial use and community within the municipality. And we've now invested a lot of time and resources in this property to switch now. It's a little bit down the road for us.
And I hear that, but that doesn't mean now the, what might be better for the town would be for you to be developing a structure that is sitting empty that is not near residential use and will have a lot less opposition than you might be having.
Well, that may be an option if we're not successful here. Again, we think that being in an area like this is less impactful as far as the other sites that are available in town. At the time that we did start our search, we did come to the municipality and we asked for some guidance on what areas we, they thought would be best suited for this. And this is, this site in itself wasn't necessarily pointed to, but nobody in the municipality said to us, "We have this area that we would like to see senior communities." What we were actually told was that the municipality was in the process of developing a new master plan. It would probably be a couple of years down the road. So until that master plan is developed, we really can't tell you what areas of the municipality will be zoning to permit this type of use.
Mr. Joshwitz, Mr. Joshwitz, I think at this point, we have to let the applicant proceed with their application and tell us why they think this is the best thing to slice bread. As we go along, I think there might be opportunities for you to question some of the decisions. But I think at this point, we got to let them present their case before we talk about alternate sites.
Can I ask a question, though? Relative, not so much about why not, why this site versus another one? But I think it is, it's useful if the applicant could just tell us why broadly. They could broadly describe their general site selection search efforts that they undertook to determine that this was the optimal site. That's what I'd like to know.
Sure. Our process, generally speaking, and as you said in broad terms, is, are that when we identify a municipality or a general proximity of where we think would be well-suited for this type of development, we will go to the municipality. We will look at the zoning maps. We will talk to sometimes the mayor, sometimes the planner, sometimes the zoning officer, ask for input as to how they feel about different sites that may be available. We will reach out to the brokerage community to see if they're aware of any sites that are available. If we identify a property that isn't necessarily on the market, but we feel is well-suited for what we want to do, we'll try and approach the property owners. As you can imagine, in a lot of cases where a property's not on the market, our, we don't necessarily get the opportunity to speak with somebody or meet with them, but that's generally the process that we go through.
And did you do it for the most part in this particular case?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so in that effort, were there other finalist locations in the township that maybe didn't measure up to your optimal site, meaning the application that you submit? But were there other finalists located around the township?
We're going back a ways. Off the top of my head, we did look at a couple of sites, whether they were not available, not feasible. I don't recall the specific nature of each site that we looked at off the top of my head. I personally, myself, don't go and conduct this search. I have people in my organization who do and then present the sites to me and then I'll take a look at them.
Yeah, is there a way of obtaining that in the future? I mean, obviously, you don't have it now, but I was, I'm curious, because I think it's an important question.
Well, that would either require the testimony of someone in my organization, which I don't have a problem with them testifying, or I would have to get that information and submit it.
Certainly.
By legal counsel on that.
Okay, thank you.
Nora, any other hands?
Yes, I see Andrew Hare has his hand raised. Can you hear me, Andrew?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Andrew, if you could please provide your address.
Sure, 47 Sedgfield Drive.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Weiner, you testified that Pike's been around for 63 years. You have a number of communities throughout New Jersey that you guys have built, most recently in 2018 in Hamilton and in Montvale as well. Are any of the facilities like this, this type that you're looking to build here in Parsippany next to schools? And if so, can you elaborate? And if no, can you? And if so, can you elaborate? And if no, can you can you explain why?
Most of the communities that we built, we're not necessarily the developer who are involved with site selection. So that's that's up to them and we're acting as a third-party general contractor. We did a project down in the in Montgomery Township where we acted as the G C that's not next door to, but in pretty close proximity to the new high school that was that was built. I'm trying to think where else. The property in Montvale, again, is not contiguous to to the high school, but I believe it's in close proximity to one of the regional high schools in the Bergen County area. I can't think of another situation where we were adjacent to a high school, if that answers your question.
It does. You made mention in that answer that you were not the site selection committee or the site selection people in those other projects. Can you explain why you guys were not the site selection committee on those projects, but now on this one you are?
Sure. On those projects, we were acting as a general contractor, not as a developer.
Understood. Last question I have is about commercial access to the property. Will commercial access be the same access as general public access to the properties?
What are you referring to when you say commercial?
So I'm assuming there'll be deliveries of food and nutrition and health supplies. Could be trucks, could be tractor trailers, could be whatever. Is that saying that that's what I mean when I say commercial is the delivery schedule of any sort of the supplies that these facilities will need?
The, well, deliveries would be made through the same access, but we, there won't be tractor trailers delivering here. There'll be smaller type of vans and smaller trucks than that that would be delivering supplies and food to the project.
Thank you.
Nora?
Yes, and if Mr. Hare will please put his hand down. Our next person is James Bryce. James, do you hear me?
I do. Do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Bryce, if you could please give your address.
Sir, Mr. King, my name, my name is Jim Bryce. I'm an attorney. I'm from a law firm on Murphy McHugh. The address is fifty-one Route twenty-three South, Riverdale, New Jersey. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the Friends of Greenspace. And I do have a few questions for the witness. I'm going to try to keep.
Excuse me. Can you provide to the board a list of the names of the people that you represent?
I certainly can, Chairman.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Weiner, I'm going to try to not be, do get into my questions. I do have a few questions nonetheless. I just want to kind of dovetail where there was some start about, some discussion about, excuse me, the examination of other properties within Parsippany. Have you testified your company undertook that in this case?
Yes.
Okay. As part of that analysis, does your company normally look at zoning?
Yes.
Are you familiar with any other zones in the township of Parsippany Troy Hills that allows for congregate care, assisted living, nursing homes?
Off the top of my head, at this point in time, I couldn't tell you where those were, but I can tell you that my staff did look at the current zoning at that time, which is, as I said, several years ago.
Okay. And are there zone districts, in fact, in the township Parsippany that do allow for congregate living, assisted living, nursing homes, and uses of that type?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what zones are permitted throughout the entire town of Parsippany. I would think that there could be, but as I said, at the time that we conducted the search, we were advised by the mayor and several members on the planning team that there was a rezoning, a new zoning plan being looked at. So that may have changed between now and the time that we were conducting our search.
And when was that discussion with the mayor?
I would say it was approximately two to three years ago.
Put it approximately two thousand eighteen, correct?
I would say so.
Who was the mayor at that time?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Did you have a personal meeting with the mayor?
I was at the meeting. There was several, there were probably eight to ten people at that meeting. Again, I wasn't taking notes at the meeting. There was the mayor, there was a member who represented the planning group. There were several other people. I think, I don't know if it was the town attorney was there, but there was an attorney representing the town that was at the meeting.
Was anybody from Saint Christopher's Church there?
No.
During that meeting, was there any discussion about Saint Christopher's Church?
We talked about this specific property.
In what way did you discuss it?
We asked if they thought that this would be a site that the town would think would be a good site for this type of use.
So at that meeting, you already had identified this site as a site of interest?
Yes.
And what was their response to your inquiry?
The response was that they're, again, they're in the process of reviewing their zoning. They thought that this site could be a potential candidate, but that at this point, they couldn't tell us that that they thought that the rezoning would take place or not.
Are you aware of any rezoning on this subject property?
No, I'm not.
The subject property, to your understanding, is zoned R one, correct?
I believe it's R one and R three.
Okay. Now, you're not a licensed professional planner, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. I'm not going to ask you any questions about planning of that nature, but I am going to ask you if your overall desire with this property is to acquire the rear piece or the approximate twelve point three four acres from Saint Christopher's.
Yes, that's our intention.
Okay. And you intend to subdivide that from the existing property, correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of the zoning requirements that are, I'll strike that. I'm not going to get there. You testified earlier about the various range of ages that are to occupy the various units within the facility. You indicated that there were younger seniors. The attorney kept on referring to people who were elderly. What is the minimum age requirement for renting within this community?
Well, that's never really become an issue for us because, as I said, the average age of the residents are between seventy-eight to eighty-two years old. I, I don't believe I said in my testimony that we were targeting a specific age group. What I said was that it was our hope that a community like this would attract younger seniors. And by younger seniors, we're talking about how people who are in their, let's say, mid-sixties as opposed to mid to late seventies.
Now, you indicated that this is for senior living, correct?
Correct.
Is there a cutoff as the age that is required to rent in this facility?
Again, my organization doesn't get involved in setting the rates or the marketing. So I defer to Les on that. In my experience in both building and developing these communities, I've never had a situation where someone that who wasn't in in the sixty-five and up range approached us to live in the community.
Mr. Weiner, I'm just going to give you some direction. If you don't know the answer to any question that I ask, please feel free to say that you do not know.
Sure.
It's perfectly legitimate to say that. So if I ask you again, do you know whether or not there is a minimum age limitation?
The answer that, the answer is, I don't know.
Okay. As far as amenities that are to be provided on site, are you generally aware of what amenities are being proposed on site?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do you agree that a gymnasium or a gym is being proposed?
An athletic center, yes.
Okay. The dining, you indicate that there's dining on-site, congregate dining, I believe?
Yes.
And are those restaurant-type dining? Are they kind of cafeteria-style? How's the dining work?
Well, again, I'll defer to less stretch on what's going to be proposed, but on other communities, we normally provide various options of dining from a formal dining setting to casual dining setting to pub-like setting. We have three different dining areas depicted on our plan right now, and I would defer to thrive and to less as to what the intentions are for the style of dining in each of those areas.
Okay, okay. There's also a proposed cafe, correct?
Yes.
There's a proposed salon?
Correct.
There's a proposed lounge?
Yes. The cafe and the lounge would be would be one area and then at the lobby or entrance area, there would be another lounge that would allow seniors to congregate and socialize.
Okay. Now, does any of those lounges or cafes serve alcohol?
The cafes and lounges don't typically do. In the dining areas, sometimes they do. Again, I'll defer to less as to what the program is going to be here.
Okay. So you don't know if any type of alcohol service is being proposed on the on the subject property?
I haven't been involved in those discussions yet with Les and his team. I can tell you that on other communities, it ranges from having a bottle club where residents are allowed to keep liquor there and we'll dispense it for them to some areas where we actually get a liquor license and we'll serve or sell liquor to the residents.
Okay. Now, as far as the dining is concerned, is that open, is the dining open to the public or just to residents?
Just to the residents and their family, visitors.
And visitors, meaning visitors to the residents or just general visitors to the?
No, someone coming to visit a resident.
So just to make, be absolutely clear, I couldn't show up on the site as proposed and know that you guys serve very good food, make a reservation and go there to eat?
No, that's not the intention.
I couldn't just show up into the lounge and order myself a cup of coffee?
No, that's not the intention. The amenities that are on site are being developed and built to serve the residents of the communities and their families and friends who come to visit them.
Okay. Do you have, well, have you ever looked at your partner's website, Thrive's website?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever reviewed your partner's website, Thrive's website?
Their general website? Or a website for a specific community?
Their general website.
Probably a long time. I mean, our relationship with Thrive goes back about five or six years. I'm sure at that time I went on the website, but I haven't gone on recently.
Now, I'm just going to, well, I'll come back to that. Talking about, there was some discussion about affordable housing and you indicated in a response to one of the member of the public's questions that there was a ten percent required sit-aside through the mandated through the state, I believe, correct?
Correct. Under the, under the D C A or Department of Health who regulates the assisted living licensure requirements.
Okay. And you indicated that it was actually ten percent of licensed beds, correct?
Correct.
How many licensed assisted living beds are being proposed?
I would defer to Les on that question. I don't have that information.
So you don't know, so just to be clear, you don't know the answer as to how many of the one hundred and fifty-six dwelling units are going to actually be for assisted living?
That's correct. I'll defer to Les on that answer.
Okay. You would agree that there are one hundred and fifty-six units being proposed?
Yes.
Of which fifty units are for independent cottages? Correct?
Yes, those cottages are independent living and can be converted to possibly assisted living. I don't know off the top of my head whether a portion of those are being included in the bed count or not. I know that the units in the amenity building, the fifty units there are, and I know that the fifty-six units are, but I don't recall off the top of my head. I would have to defer to Les as to whether and how many of the cottages might be included in that bed count.
Okay, you did review the site plan, correct?
Yes, I did.
Or it's actually, I guess, a variance plan rather than a site plan because this is a bifurcated application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you did review those documents in preparing for tonight?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar that there is indicated in one section adjacent to the amenities building that is actually specifies for units as assisted living with services?
Yes.
Okay. That's called out specifically versus memory care, correct?
Correct.
And all of the cottages, both with driveways and garages and without, they don't indicate in any way, shape or form that those are assisted living with services, correct?
Actually, I believe that they call out as independent slash assisted living potentially.
Well, that's where I'm trying to get at, sir. Where do you draw the line between independent living and assisted living? There on one part of the plan, you indicate a certain amount as specifically as assisted living with services and the rest are just cottages.
So the independent living with services are potentially areas where they may not be included in the bed count as licensed units with the state, but we would provide services through a separate home healthcare agency.
Okay, a separate home healthcare agency that you and your partners would run or a third party?
Yes, that Thrive would run.
Okay. And that would be separately billed, I assume?
Again, those questions I'll direct to Les.
So you don't know if that would be included in the monthly rent?
Those are questions I would direct to Les.
Now, as to the independent cottages, generally, what services are provided without any type of home care to those residents?
Again, I'll defer to the programming and operations to Les and to Thrive.
Okay, so you don't know?
I'll defer to them. Let them answer it. They're the experts in terms of operations. And they'll provide.
Do you know, do you know how many employees are going to be required to be on site?
Again, I'll defer to Les, Stretch and Thrive for any questions pertaining to operations and staffing.
Now, you you are the managing member, correct?
Of the entity that's developing the property, yes.
You don't know the type of employees that are needed to run the facility?
I have a general knowledge, but I would rather let Les, who's the expert who will be testifying about operations, answer any questions that have to do with operations.
Okay. You indicated about off-site impacts. Did you ever conduct any type of study regarding site lighting on the subject property?
The civil engineer of record developed the site lighting. I would defer to them to answer that question.
Okay. Would it surprise you that?
Mr. Bryce, Mr. Bryce, with all due respect, you're asking this witness a lot of technical questions. He's a fact witness for the applicant. We have a planner, we have engineers, we have architects, we have a number of other witnesses that I, in my thirty years of experience, are generally much, much more tuned to qualify to answer these questions. Why are you asking this man all these questions and all he keeps saying he's going to defer to the to the proper witness?
Just to test his level of knowledge, Chairman, and frankly, this witness testified as to his statement that there was minimal impact to surrounding residential properties. His specific statement is.
He's not an expert witness. He's a fact witness. He's not an expert witness, okay? Fact witness, he's not an expert witness. He's a fact witness. He's not an expert witness, okay?
That's fine. Sir, you indicated that in this particular uh development, there would be a reduced need for ambulances, correct?
Correct.
And you qualified that to say if it couldn't be handled on site, correct?
If what couldn't be handled on site, sir?
That was what you said, if there there was an incident, people call 911, it would reduce ambulance traffic. Um, unless it couldn't be handled on site.
If the nature of the issue was minor and uh we could provide comfort and care to the resident within the means that we're allowed to, then we would do so. If we felt it was something that they needed immediate uh care from a hospital, then uh we would, they would make that assessment and uh handle it that way.
Okay, and if needed, if a resident or some person needed transportation to the hospital, that would be done through 911?
Potentially, depends on the nature of the of the situation.
Okay, let's see.
We do have, do plan to have transportation in the form of a van that would be able to uh take a resident to a doctor's office. Um, if they needed to go to a hospital but didn't require uh an ambulance to do so, um, they might do that. So it depends on the severity and the nature of the incident at hand.
Okay, and if it was severe enough to require an ambulance to bring him to the hospital, that would then require the activation of 911, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you did talk about and and you specified the continuum of care.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Right.
Now, you indicated that you have certain continuum of care. I know that I don't want to get into the weeds with operations. There's no skilled nursing to be provided on site, is there?
No.
So the continuum of care is limited, correct?
It's limited to the uses that I explained during my testimony.
Fair enough. Now, let's say that there's somebody who's a a resident of a cottage. Um, and they became to a, to a position in life where they needed continuing care, I guess, in um a memory care unit. Are they guaranteed admission to the memory care unit?
Again, sir, I will defer all questions to the operations of this community to to thrive into less stretch. We'll be testifying.
Now, you did sign an application for this uh variance request, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you signed that, and I can't really show it to you as an exhibit because I apologize, this remote stuff does not necessarily lend itself to uh showing exhibits, but I'll I'll represent that I'm looking at a application made to the Board of Adjustment received September 24th, 2019, and it was executed on September 20, 2019. Do you recall signing such an application?
Um, I recall signing an application.
Now, one of the questions the application asked and you responded to, it says statewide, the subject property is particularly suited for the use sought as opposed for the use which it is zoned. And you answered, the configuration of the property with the attendant adjacent uses are unique within the R hyphen one zone. So, understanding that the configuration of the property with the attendant adjacent uses are unique, are unique within the R hyphen one zone, can you further specify why this is particularly suited as opposed to single-family residential?
I I believe I covered why we feel it's it's particularly suited. Um, I thought my testimony was pretty clear.
Well, can you tell me now?
Uh, for the same reasons that I said, it's uh got good uh access and uh to infrastructure in terms of uh major roads and highways, easy access, uh the fact that it's near uh or right behind St. Christopher's Church and lends itself to the interaction between the residents and the church, same with the high school. Um, it's a bucolic setting. I I think those all lend well to this um application and to this type of use.
Okay, and what what physical attributes of this particular property make it appropriate for the development as you proposed?
Um, I think it it has a a nice uh landscape uh design. I think that we're going to make use of the existing uh trees and 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 wooded areas to a certain extent that we can leave around the borders of the property. Um, it has uh some great differential, but uh it works within the confines of the development that we're proposing.
Okay, you're not aware of any other properties in Parsippany, Troy Hills that have those same attributes?
Not to my knowledge.
So no other parts, no?
I didn't say there are no other, sir, I didn't, I'm not saying that there are no other properties in Parsippany. At the time when we identified this property, we felt it was well-suited for this development.
All right, I have no further questions of this witness at this time. Thank you.
Laura, any other hands?
Yes, I see. Michael S. Pejo, do you hear me, Michael?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Bryce, please put your hand down.
Michael, if you could please provide uh your address?
Eighty Brookline Drive.
Thank, thank you, sir.
A question about when you said it has easy access, have you ever tried to make a left or a right-hand turn on 202 at rush hour?
Um, I haven't tried to make a turn onto 202 during rush hour, but I've been to the site various times of the day, and I've um been able to make turns left and right.
During or before or after or during the pandemic?
Uh, both before and during the pandemic.
Because I live on Brookline Drive and rush hour time, if I want to make a left-hand turn onto 202, I can wait five minutes to get on.
Not a question, this is not a question. We don't, we really don't want to know at this point the what trouble you're having with Brookline Drive. Do you have a question for this?
Okay, are you, are you aware that it can be a significant problem to make turns onto 202 without a traffic light during rush hour? That two, are you aware 202 gets backed up from 80 to the traffic light on Rita Drive and it gets backed up from Route 10 to the traffic light? On Halsey, I'm asking, sir, may I ask, I'm a taxpaying citizen and I deserve to ask a question.
No, you're talking, sir, did testimony at this point, you asked the man if he was familiar with the with the intersection. Now, the man's going to answer the question, okay?
Aware of this, that this is a significant issue?
I'm not really quite sure I understand what the question is. Am I aware that there's traffic on Littleton Road?
Significant traffic that backs up virtually the length of it until you reach a traffic light.
I'm going to give you one more opportunity, and if you don't comply, I'm going to have Mr. Uh.
Okay, I'll ask a different question.
Or I'll mute you, okay? So ask the questions. We do not want testimony on the traffic on the highway. We will have ample time for you to say whatever you'd like to say once the applicant has completed its application, okay?
Okay, are you aware that currently the area is low-density housing? And what you're proposing will basically double the number of housing units that are in the Rita, Brookline area?
I'm aware of what the current zoning is, and I'm aware of what we're proposing.
Is a piece of property that you are choosing for this price-wise significantly cheaper because it's not currently zoned for what you want to use it for as opposed to a different piece of property that is zoned for the type of use that you're wanting to do?
Um, I'm not quite sure I understand.
I'm asking, is this piece of property significantly cheaper for you to purchase for what you want to use it for? Then let's say if you were to purchase one of the other pieces of property that have been mentioned, that is already currently zoned for this type of use?
I I don't know.
So price, did price become an issue in choosing the piece of property that you're proposing?
Mr. King, Mr. King, are these questions appropriate to the variance application?
Well, the the question should be on the testimony of the um witness. The witness did um provide testimony probably outside his scope, but he did provide testimony that did touch upon some of these issues. So for the record, I'd allow it.
So I'm talking about the the financial side of this transaction, whether he per buys a cheaper piece of property or more.
I I I I'm not the attorney for the applicant, but I don't know that this is the proper witness. The um attorney for the applicant hasn't objected.
I guess, I guess my my question is because what I'm trying to figure out is, he talks about the significant amount of planning that they have done for this and that almost as though we should, you know, feel empathetic for the fact that they've done all this planning for this property. The fact is while knowing, while knowing the entire time.
Consideration here.
No, my question is.
That's not a consideration.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, the applicant's attorney, I think, wants to say something.
I, but my only comment was, Mr. King, Mr. Chairman, was that the witness was now testifying. He wasn't asking a question. I did not, I think the question is objectionable. I didn't, I didn't interpose an objection be because it's not germane to the issue. It's, the board does never consider price or charges or costs, but I'm I I'm not one to.
The rea- the reason I'm bringing it up is because your witness brought it up. He said we did all of this research and we did all this investment because the mayor, the former mayor told us to look at this property.
You you are misinterpreting his words. He never said he was going to buy a cheaper piece of property. Mr. Vogel, if your witness is being hammered, will you please defend him, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Why, why pick, why do all this?
Uh, can I step in here too? Because, I mean, while I don't particularly appreciate the line of questioning by the questioner, I do understand where he's getting to, and it's a previous point that I made that um it's it this um factual witness um is not able to provide more precise detail, but I think in the future, it should, it it should be provided to this board. And that was in the scope of uh when I asked him to describe the broad, you know, the the site selection process and 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 how it was conducted and if there were any finalist properties. He couldn't speak to it, understandable, this happened a while ago. But I mean, I'm definitely going to be asking for answers to the questions that he's not able to provide precise answers to. Um, it's as simple as that.
Nancy, I totally agree with you, but I think it has to be what the appropriate witness. This is a fact witness who has not, not given us a whole hell of a lot of specifics. He's giving us a lot of generalities.
Mr. Chair, because he says he can't remember, Mr. Chair.
May I have an opportunity to respond to that issue, or would you prefer that I hold it to a later date?
Mr. Vogel, please, please, second.
All right. As to whether, as to reviews of other sites, as to cost of other sites, as to whether other sites are available or not germane to this application. This is an, I I see you shaking your head, but please give me the opportunity to tell you the basis for my statement. This is an application on this piece of property. The application is to put a particular use on this property. The issue is not whether or not there are other properties that could have a similar use. The the focus of this application is whether or not this particular use uh can be granted to variance. I started to give you before the inherently beneficial use aspect and what the test is, and that test does not relate to whether or not there are other properties that could have been considered or that are available for the similar use. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask one last question?
If I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm the board member here, uh, sir, if you would just hold off for a second. Sir, your factual witness testified to the level of the comprehensiveness and exhaustive search that he conducted in identifying this particular piece of property. I think it's important that he be a little bit more precise and detailed in his in the, in the broader description of how he went about the site, site selection analysis and process to be able to identify this particular property and, like I asked before, and I'm I'm going to be dogged in regards to uh obviously giving you all the time that you need to provide such information because he couldn't speak off the cuff today, but to provide what other potential sites in the township of Persippany um coming off of his meetings with the mayor, potentially a township attorney and other planning officials as to, you know, what other sites were potentially finalists. That's all.
Miss Snyder, I I, I I hear you and I don't disagree, but the point being, Mr. Vogel made, and I agree with 100%. That's not the review or purview of this particular application. It's about this particular site. The decision product, sorry, sorry, I'm going to finish. This particular site selection is not our purview of judgment. Our judgment is to determine if this application is approvable for this site, period, in my opinion. Thank you.
Understand, but this is still meaningful information that helps.
It's meaningful information, but has nothing to do with this.
This township. At the end of the day, Mr. Williams, we represent this township, and this is relevant information at the, no matter how you cut it.
I don't disagree with the relevant, but it doesn't have anything to do with this application.
Well, regardless, I would like that information.
Okay, I I may disagree with uh Ms. Snyder, but I will attempt to satisfy everybody. That's my job. Uh, by the time we don't have the information this evening, I I'll have to go over it. I don't believe it's germane to the issue, but I I certainly don't want to cut anybody off. If they have an interest, then I can supply some information. We will attempt to do it.
Can I say one other thing too? Well, one about a concern as the parent of a young child, and I noticed the witness is talking about the schools being plus.
Just don't get it, do you?
I I, you know what, I'm a, you don't get it.
I'm going to cut you off if you don't ask a question. Please, this is the way the procedure is run. It's very simple. Ask a question.
I'm concerned about the drivers. If you are focusing on nothing against, you know, against elderly people, but elderly people who are not self-aware, who are going to be driven.
Hopper, will you please mute him?
He's muted.
Laura, is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Bob, I have a couple comments, if you don't mind.
Right ahead, Mr. Chyba.
This issue of other sites really goes to their planner addressing the recently adopted master plan. And to the extent policy is expressed in the plan as well as locations, because that would have to be addressed under the inherently beneficial as well as DC standards. So it's, it's really a witness to be called, I think he's the what, number four or five down the line. And the only other question I have is follow up on some of the other board questions. When you did your due diligence, did you have anybody look at um water supply, sewer capacities, electric, all of those items?
At the time that we identified this site, I was advised by my staff that utilities were available.
Have you learned otherwise?
I'm sorry?
Have you learned otherwise?
I know that there currently is an issue with water.
An issue, okay. We can discuss it later with you in here. I think it's important in terms of what you're proposing, or I think you should think about that.
Well, just, just to be clear, the availability of utilities and the like are not a use, are not a use issue. They are site plan issues. This is a bifurcated application. If the board would vote in favor of the variance for the use and then a site plan application would have to follow and all of the requirements of site plan would have to be satisfied, including all the utilities. And if they couldn't be, even if the variance had been granted, the facility couldn't be built. So that is an issue not for a bifurcated use. That is an issue for site plan and that always has been. I mean, that's a clear way of, of handling all applications.
I guess I disagree with you from a planning standpoint. You're going to make a plan. You need to know what can be supported at that location.
Yeah, John, the, the simple, the simple story is that there is not anything within the municipal land use law or in any case law or any planning treatise that indicates that utilities are to be considered with respect to use. Use is use and utilities is site plan. That's very clear. And my, my, my view is, and, and I, I think it's, it's fair one. If the use is permitted or if it is approved as a variance and you can't get the utilities to serve the site, then you can't build the building. But you don't get into determining how to satisfy utilities until you have the use. Number one. How much is the use? Is it 156 units? Or is it 200 units? Or is it 100 units? How much water is necessary? How much sewer is necessary? Where does it come from? Can you put a well in? Can you put a cistern in? Can you put a, 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 can you put in municipal services? Can you get services from some other place? All those are site plan issues. They're not use issues.
Mr. King, if you don't mind, can you just clarify or confirm that that's true? Yeah, I, I see water is not just the standard utility. Yeah, water is significant and the applicant's already stated that there's a water issue. So are we not supposed to consider the fact that there's a water issue at this point in the process?
So, so counsel on the law is correct. However, with regard to John, he's also correct because bring before a zoning board, something that may not be able to be built if they can't get water there. They may on paper be able to do it, but any resolution that we do, I always put in there that, that it's subject to all the requirements of, of the municipal order and state law, et cetera. And before anything can get built, they have to have their utilities. They have to have adequate water sewage, et cetera. So although technically, yes, this, this is just the use that we're going to be discussing. And at planning, that's when all those other issues with regard to water are meted out, but you know, technically, the counsel for the applicant is correct.
Let, let me also mention that with respect to two aspects, inherently beneficial use and affordable housing, the municipality, whatever its utilities are or facilities are for whatever water sewer, whatever, has an obligation to make it available. I don't know what the current status is, but I do know that Persippany is working on upgrading its system. So it, it's a very nice issue for someone who might be objecting to the project to say, oh, wait a minute now. We, we don't know that water is absolutely going to be available. That's, that's, that's inappropriate. Because we know that there is, quote, as Mr. Weiner said, a water issue. We also know that Persippany is working on it. We also know that it's an obligation to supply it for this kind of facility. So to me, it's nothing more than a red herring. It is nothing to do with whether or not this use is appropriate for this site. That's a decision you have to make. Hopefully it would be in favor of it. It may be against it. If it's against it, then the issue is not germane. It doesn't matter. If you vote in favor of it, we still have to go for a site plan. And, and at that point, there are many ways, many ways, even if there is a water issue to resolve that kind of a utility problem.
Township of Persippany does not even control their water company right now. It's being run by a special master because they, the town tried to stop one of the affordable housing developments by saying they had no water. They went to court. The judge appointed a special master to run the water department in the town. And from what I understand, they are upgrading everything. So that's a little bit of information that no one seems to know about, which is amazing.
Mr. Chairman, Chaz Holloway here. I have a question for Mr. Weiner. Has anyone ever wandered off the site? Or is everybody under control at all times? Your experience with the other applications or other sites, I'm just curious if you know, the, the doors are alarmed or what the situation is.
I can tell you this, that the way the property is constructed, there are access controls limiting ingress and egress to the areas where memory care residents would be residing. So that it's controlled. If they're outdoor spaces, they're usually gated or fenced in so that they can't, the residents can't just wander off. Has there ever been an elope, an elopement case? I'm sure that there has been. Again, my purview is not into the operations. Once a building is complete and I turn it over to my partner who's doing the operations, they're pretty much running it. But I can tell you that there are provisions made during design and construction to prevent that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Nora, are there any other hands?
I see a James Talarico. James, can you hear me? James?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that.
James, before we start, James, can you provide your address, please?
Sure, it's 51 Dolly Drive.
Thank you, sir.
So my question sort of probably ties into the planner as well, but the question is more about density. He said there was going to be 156 units. And I guess my question in regards to it, which yields to the inherit, inherently beneficial use portion of the project, because that's what they're going for, is how did they determine that 155 units was acceptable? Why wasn't it less? Also, on top of that, how many floors is this building planning to be?
The cottages and the memory care village are single-story structures. The amenities building that contains the common areas and the 50 apartments is three stories and approximately 34 and a half feet to the midpoint of the roof line.
Well, so back to that point, why not do two stories, which would be conforming more in the R1 zone, which is what you're currently in?
I'll defer to the architect's design and let them, their testimony answer any questions about the design of the building.
Well, it's not just about the design. It goes towards the density and the number of units you're proposing. So it's not about architecture. It's more about if there's less units, your building isn't as high.
Again, this involves engineering and planning. We're trying to limit the amount of impervious space. So rather than having a two-story building that's more sprawling and would take up more of the ground. If you look at the plans, you'll see there is a fair amount of outdoor space created around the building. So that was the intent of that design. As far as the density, the, the number of units and the type of units were the result of driving their operations team along with the architects coming up with a design based on the market analysis and demand and what we felt was appropriate for the site.
But if the board were to come back to tell you that the, if it would, it would become a more inherently beneficial use if you had less units and only two stories, which would be more in tune with the rest of the residential area that you're trying to put this development within, would that be something you would consider?
At this point in time, I, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know. We're, we're proposing this plan. We're willing to listen to the board. I'm not an attorney. I could let my attorney answer any questions regarding the impact of an inherently beneficial use and what affects it and what doesn't.
To the questionnaire, frequently applications come in with fine sky numbers and we bring them down to earth. I think this was 22 acres, if I remember correctly, and you're talking about 150 units. That's about seven plus to an acre. That's something that we have to consider and, and we hear all the testimony. We've heard probably 2% of the testimony so far. So there's a, there's a, there's a lot more innings in this ballgame. Okay?
Well, I, I totally underst- understand, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring the question up because again, they, he, he made a statement about his understanding of the area and what he felt was a the optimal development for that site, especially being the R1 zone, which is zoned only 40,000 square foot lots, which technically would mean if it's a 22 acre parcel, there's only 22 units. So he's proposing 155 on a 22 unit situation.
He's, he's a businessman. What do you expect him to say?
Well, I, I expect to ask the question so that the board can also ask him those questions.
Let's get, while we get some of the numbers correct, the whole site is 22 acres. They're developing about 12.
So even worse, then it's 12 lots, 12 units.
12, okay.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Nora, any other hands?
The only other hand is the one that was muted.
I'm not sure he ever put it down after he was muted.
Right. Otherwise, there's no other hand.
Bob, you're muted.
Ask him if he wants to ask a question.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Espejo, do you have any other questions that you would like to have?
I did think that I had put my hand down, but I just wanted to know that why if there's been no outreach to the school or the church, which are being used as a plus over twice now by the developer, why he keeps using those as a plus when he hasn't reached out to either or and knows if they also consider it a plus?
So Weiner, can you answer that question?
Sure. Hello? Somebody say something? Hello?
Yes, there's a question for you.
Yeah. I thought I heard somebody say something. The answer simply is this. I didn't say that we didn't reach out to the church or that we haven't had conversations with the church. I said, we haven't discussed any formal relationship. I did not have any conversation with the school. It's just my opinion that it would be beneficial to the community.
And do you think if one of the memory type care people wandered off property into the school grounds, that that could potentially cause a problem, be it the high school or the junior high or the elementary school, because there's all three within about a two block vicinity of each other?
If a memory care resident potentially wanders off the, the property in any situation, it's a concern.
For, for the person or the students or for both?
For the person.
What about the students?
I don't see where it would be a concern for the students.
So somebody with Alzheimer who, you know, could have very unpredictable personality, sometimes violent, you don't think could potentially cause a problem to a six-year-old kid walking down the sidewalk?
This is a high school, not.
No, there's, I don't think you're aware, right down the road is an elementary school. Those kids walk right down Rita Drive to get to and from school, right across the street from Rita Drive is the junior high where they walk.
There was a violent person in the facility and they were to get out, it could be a problem to, to the schools. That might have been a lockdown. I agree, we have to consider that. That's definitely a consideration for the board. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Espejo, please lower your hand. We have one more question. Robert Esaro, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Robert, if you could please provide your address.
Sure, it's 31 Field Press Road, Persippany, New Jersey.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. One of the questions I have is he said that he has other sites similar to the site he's putting in Persippany. I would like to know if those sites are in R1 zones.
I didn't say that they were similar. I said that we have other sites that we're looking at in other municipalities to develop a similar type of community.
Are they in R1 zones?
No, they're not.
Okay. All right. Another question I have in reference to, you had said there's going to be restaurants, cafes and other type of food distributing amenities on the site. Do you know about how many meals during the day are going to be prepared?
That I would defer to the operators to answer any questions regarding the operations of the property.
Okay, are you building the building?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the ventilation system?
Yes.
Well, the ventilation system, ventil, clearing any type of odors that might emanate into the air around the residential areas?
There, there's a commercial kitchen. It will have a commercial hood. It will have an exhaust. I, I don't think it would.
So there's no scrubbing system?
There's a hood. There's a ventilation system. We haven't designed it yet, but generally speaking, to my knowledge, there's usually not a scrubbing system.
You mean it's out into the air around the, around the residential area that it's sitting in?
I'm sorry?
It will just, the food odors would just be blown out from the hood, out the roof, into the air, around the homes that surround it.
Mr. Esaro, this is something that we would definitely discuss with the architect engineer and all those people, the, the, the particular professional witnesses. We have had many, many, many applications where restaurants are in the vicinity of residential areas. And what I'm, I'm thinking about is the Tabor Road Cavern, which has the I can't think of the name of the glacier farms above the property. And we were very conscious of, of, of odors and, and things like that. So that's something that we always, that we always deal with. And when that time comes, you're more than welcome to question that witness.
Okay, thank you so much. And respect to some of the other questions I have, I think they were already answered. So right now I'll just defer. Thank you.
Nora, anybody else?
I see a, Mr. Patel. Can you hear me? Nikunj Patel?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nikunj Patel. I'm, I'm resident of 20 Eldred Road.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that, Mr. Patel?
Sure. My name is Nikunj Patel. I'm resident of 20 Eldred Road, Morris Prince, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, thank.
Yeah, my question is specific to noise pollution within the residential zone. So was there any study conducted as part of the selection process to benchmark current noise pollution level versus what will be or what is in similar properties, right? What is the impact on, on this surrounding communities? um what is in similar properties, right? What is the impact on on this surrounding communities?
Uh I did not conduct any studies, no.
I think it is uh for the board to consider if we are developing something in a residential zone.
That was, no, I think I think when the planner uh testifies, I think it would be proper to ask the planner questions if he doesn't present uh an entire uh sit, you know, description of the situation. Um normally, the planning testimony gets involved in things like that. So uh I I think you might you might be better served asking that question of the planner.
Understand. Okay, I will remember that. Thank you very much. Um I have another question. Can I ask?
Right ahead.
Yeah. So if you look at existing neighborhood, typically there are at least um around this area, around at least one-third of acre of acre lot, right? And there are one single-family use, right? This particular property that you're trying to develop is twelve acres about give or take, right? And the number of units, I think it they came up um in terms of uh, I think this similar question came up about density. But my question is, if existing housing is a one-third of a lot, which is the the characteristic of uh this neighborhood, why would we want to significantly change that? So why do we want to allow that if we are going to allow it?
I believe the inherently beneficial nature of the project and the services it will provide to elderly residents of Parsippany warrants uh the development.
Yeah, but the use that you are planning to um use this property for that significantly alters the 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 nature of this community. I think the use portion goes against the 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 current character of the neighborhood.
Mr. Patel, I think he asked your question and he answered it. Do you have another question?
Um I understand he answered it, but it's not uh, I would say I'm not satisfied with that answer.
That's his answer, Mr. Patel. What do you want from me?
I want the board to consider this kind of uh uh criterias.
Mr. Patel, we consider all of these things. We consider all of the testimony from all of the witnesses. That's our job.
Thank you very much. I just want to make my point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it is uh past ten o'clock.
I know, but I'm trying to get through these these last questions. Laura, can you tell me, is anybody else?
I see David Kamora has his hand up. Can you hear me, Dave? Dave Kamora? Now he's muted. Okay, Dave, can you hear? Can you hear me? All right, I see Nicholas Homiak's hand up again.
Uh yes, I have. Yes, one question. Um Mr. Werner said.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Homiak was already uh already had an opportunity to ask questions of the witness.
That's correct.
Uh you, I'm used to uh, you can ask several questions.
Well, you you get one, uh you know, one, usually one chance. It's up to the chairman.
Make a quick one. Make it.
Uh Mr. Werner said that the seniors would be fenced in. Which particular seniors and then how are they going to interact in this fantasy with the uh schoolchildren?
Yeah. He was talking about the memory care people, the people with dementia, the people with Alzheimer's. He wasn't talking about, this is not a concentration camp, Nick. Come on.
All right, it's it's an Alzheimer's camp.
I I think the word is Alzheimer's.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Nora, can you hear me?
Yes, uh Mr. Kamora.
Hi, okay. Sorry about that. David Kamora, ten Henyon Drive. Um I just have a question regarding beneficially to the community. Um you had, uh which seems to be a big part of this application. I recall speaking with uh you, David, at the last meeting that we had at St. Christopher's, and you indicated that the rent for these units might be in the area of eight thousand dollars a month. And your testimony before indicated that Parsippany is a resident, uh the residents, there's an average set of income of fifty thousand. Not sure what that that average you mentioned was, if I heard you correctly. I'm just wondering, at eight thousand dollars a month, how many Parsippany residents would actually benefit from this kind of activity? I know that ten percent are going to be um subsidized in some way, but if ninety percent are going to be paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year, is that realistic to say that it's benefiting Parsippany's community and elderly residents?
Well, uh very frankly, Nick, I don't recall uh stating that the average rent um was going to be eight thousand dollars a month. So again, when it comes to uh the the rents and how that works, I'll defer to Thrive. Um I didn't say that the average income in Parsippany is fifty thousand dollars. I was referring to the demand when I asked a question by a board member, and the criteria for the demand that we measure is we look at the number of residents who are seventy-five years and over and the number of residents who have incomes, household incomes of fifty thousand dollars or more. I didn't say that that was the average uh in the township.
Fifty thousand or so. Um looking at a Parsippany, have you um is there some kind of research that you're done that that said that there are X amount of residents that meet that criteria that would be able to actually afford the rent that you will be charging?
There was a market study done, and as part of that market study, which was done by an independent firm, they do uh an analysis of the demand and how many residents within uh a certain radius, I believe it was five miles or seven miles of the property, would meet that criteria.
Okay, so that that extends outside the borders of Parsippany potentially.
Can we get a copy of that uh uh market study?
Sure. Um Jerry, are you okay with that?
Uh yeah, I'm not going to say we'll we'll uh we'll provide that. I'll take it under advisement.
Okay, uh it'd be interesting to see that as well, I think. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kamora. Nora, anybody else?
No new hands raised.
Okay, when can we carry this case to?
Hey, Ellie.
Hold on one moment.
Mr. Chair, whilst he's doing that, we've had between eighty and a hundred people here all night. Um are we going to continue with online or do we have a facility big enough to go in person for this particular case?
Yes.
Well, I can answer that. We do not have a facility big enough. This application will continue virtual.
David, the problem is that if we go to a room, there'll be two hundred and fifty people, and we cannot accommodate two hundred and fifty people. That's that's my, I mean, do you remember the night the night we were, we had the meeting? Uh uh you know, unless uh Fuhrer Murphy loosens up the rules a little bit, we are stuck. You know, the six feet apart uh and and all this stuff makes it very difficult for for us to do business. So um and you know, in a lot of ways, for an application like this, it's 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 better to do it remotely, in my personal opinion. Um but.
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's not a criticism towards anyone. You know, last we spoke, we were moving towards the the P A L, and I was thinking this might be an issue.
Now, the P A O couldn't accommodate us, especially with uh the social distance, and the number would have been very low.
And the schools aren't opening up to us yet.
I'm going to ask the applicant, uh if we could come up with a special meeting where we gave you the whole night, uh would you be willing to pick for it?
Mr. Polo. Yeah, if we're going to have a special meeting um with the number of people, we might be able to finish in uh two nights.
You are extremely optimistic. Um.
That's the nature of it.
I like I like your optimism, Mr. Polo. Uh so let me let me ask you, Nora, can we? I I, you know, and I don't understand why you don't get paid to come to meetings, and I and I feel very bad about that. And I I if I if I had a relationship with the mayor, I would go to him and ask him to pay you for these special meetings. Obviously.
Now, special meetings, special meetings work. Don't worry about it. They're they're taken care of. Uh if we could announce at our next meeting when the uh special meeting will take place.
Okay, if we could come up with a meeting in June or July where we had we had at least seven members present, uh that would work for the applicant? Because otherwise, we're never going to get this case done.
Yeah, I if you have seven members present, yes, I I uh a- as long as the other members uh would sign a would would uh view the transcript and sign a certification, so if we lose one or two here or there, there will always be seven to vote on it.
Yeah, we uh we have tapes, so they can listen to the tapes, not tapes, uh the whatever those things are, those circuitry things.
Recordings.
CDs.
All right, so how about if we carry this case to the next meeting to set?
Isn't it possible to pick a special meeting night now instead of putting it off? Because at the next meeting, I would have to tie, uh I'd have to be present uh in order to coordinate with you, and everybody, the board members are all here, Nora's here.
It's up to Nora. She runs the show.
Members, the members of the public who spoke tonight are here, and they'll hear whatever the date is. If we could set the date tonight, that would work for everybody.
What do you think? What do you think, Nora?
If the members can agree on a date tonight, that'd be great.
All right, let's look at the calendar.
Don't you have to have a time, date and place? You don't have a place.
The place is virtual.
Is everybody free next week?
How about the six, how about the six sixteen?
Try, it's worthwhile.
How about June sixteenth? Can I see a show of hands of who can make June sixteenth? Good, good?
For now, I mean, yeah, for now.
Good. All right. Well, if we carry it to June sixteenth and we don't have it on June sixteenth, you're going to have to notice. If we carry it to the next meeting with the agreement that we'll pick June sixteenth, then if we don't do it, then you don't have to renotice. You following, Dave?
Yeah, I follow. But is June sixteen a date? I mean, if we have June sixteen, that's fine with me. I'll make, you know, we'll be available.
Is there any reason why we can't do June sixteenth, Nora? As your facility was. No, we got the, we're going to do Zoom. Okay, do I have a motion to carry this to a special meeting on June sixteenth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Snyder.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, nine one close? Okay, now, members of the public, this is the only notice that you will receive that this meeting is going to be held, going to continue on June sixteenth. I say that with tongue in cheek because there'll be nineteen articles on the focus between now and June sixteenth. Pay attention to us tonight or read the focus if you can get through it. It's the only paper left in town. All right, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank members of the public. I want you to please understand that our meetings are run in a particular way, and I have to control the way the meetings are run, and I I will give everyone an opportunity to speak once the applicant has had an opportunity to present his case in full. Please be aware of that. No one will be left out. No one will be left behind. Anything else, Nora? Bob?
Well, the only thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd appreciate it if Mr. Bryce would supply uh both the board and myself with a copy of who he represents so that the next time we have a hearing, uh we know that uh who, whatever members of the public uh have questions are not represented by Mr. Bryce.
I I I agree with Mr. Vogel. I already asked Mr. Bryce, and he said he would do that. We will make sure you get a copy of.
Thank you.
And uh Mr. Chairman, I'll follow up with Mr. Bryce tomorrow uh for that.
Mr. Perez.
Yeah. Is June sixteen, seven P M. or seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, okay.
Seven thirty. Okay, motion to adjourn?
All right. So moved.
Second, Snyder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you very much for your participation tonight and uh look forward to seeing you in a few weeks. Enjoy your Memorial Day weekend. I hope you'll be able to spend it with family since it looks like the world is beginning to open up again. Thank God. And I would just tell you, my son hugged my mother, my mother, hugged my wife today for the first time in over a year, and she had tears in her eyes, so. Okay. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Happy Memorial Day.
Hey, Mr. Chadwick, can you call me tomorrow sometime?